The best, there you go.
Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Also, an automatic external defibrillator is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roque, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Otusia.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, January 7, 2014. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, January 28, 2014, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property.
Question per baby?
Second. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. There are two. Item D, approving corrections for errors in assessment and personal property. And E, approving application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles.
Question per baby?
Second. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Item F is a protest of certified assessment corrections 13165.
Good morning. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessors Office. Let me give you the background on this. The protester, Mr. Swanson, purchased the parcel at issue in July of 2013 for, I think, $110,000. His protest, so we put value on it, at one time was a church and was tax exempt as a church. Mr. Swanson is a private individual. Pursuit to state law, we put the property back on the tax rolls for 2013. State regulations require us to do it when property goes from an exempt to a non-exempt entity between January 1 and October 15. It appears that Mr. Swanson's issue is that it should remain exempt until he can sell it or update it. He's a private individual. He wouldn't qualify for exemption.
Okay. I suppose we should take action to deny the request.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Does that include enjoyment?
Yes.
Please vote. We'll begin now with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roque, please.
Here.
Here. Item 1, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, December 10, 2013.
Question per.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Item 2, citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to item 3, report from the department's director, Dr. Mark Boxoff.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
In front of you have my board report for January 14, 2014. Calling to your attention enclosure number 1. Six months into the fiscal year, still remain under budget. Working hard to continue that endeavor throughout the balance of the year. The city of Omaha was billed through November 2013, and they paid 90% of their invoices through September 2013. They have audited invoices through October 2013 and paid audited invoice balances through July 2013, which puts their new balance at 668 to 7040. Enclosure number 2, community corrections. A grant application to the Nebraska Office of Highway Safety to fund the 24/7 sobriety program that we've talked so much about. As a pilot program for one year has been submitted, we are waiting a response before implementing the launch of the program. That response from the grant authority should be coming pretty soon. This week, next week, something like that, in the next, at least in the next couple of weeks. And we're very hopeful that we'll be successful in getting that grant. Participation continues for conversion to the new GED program design, which Mr. Myers has spoke to that. There's the transition all over the country, and we are subject to that as well. Department of Corrections is currently working with DOTCom to implement all of the technological requirements for the new classroom. The Department of Corrections, there we go. The Department of Corrections is working with DOTCom to implement all of the new technological requirements that the new classroom environment will need. Part-time instructor Tom Wise retired in December, and we're beginning the process to hire a new part-time replacement for Tom. Also, the new program design for the reentry assistance program and corrections programs was implemented in early December and greatly increased the amount of cognitive programming in line with recommended practices. It also makes programming consistent between the jail and community corrections settings. Work release clients donated 1,422 hours of community service in December to various public and private charitable organizations. Work release admitted 38 individuals in December, house arrest admitted 66 individuals in December, and contributed 468 hours of community service. The reentry assistance program admitted 23 individuals in the month of December. Corrections programs, there were seven individuals that achieved GED through programs in the month of December, seven. So that's pretty good. That's up from recent months, so that's very good. Very proud of that. Barclays Eske is doing a tremendous job over there. Pretrial services, 280 offenders were placed during the month. 2,462 individuals were placed year-to-date, 797 supervised in December with a 97% compliance rate. 35 offenders were referred to the priority prosecution programs. That helps us save beds. 362 were saved during the month of December, and 7,479 beds were saved year-to-date. Robert Dumond, Just Attention International, will be on-site in February 2014, going to provide sexual abuse response training to our staff. This is an ongoing grant that has been operational for several months now. Personnel side of the House, I would like to hold enclosure number 4 to the end of my presentation. I'll move to enclosure number 6, talk about our population. Admissions for the month of December, 1,242. Releases, 1,329. Our ADP, or average daily population, was 1,099. Our numbers are still running ahead of last year. US Marshall population increased. US ICE population decreased slightly. Felony pretrial population was down just a bit. Misdemeanor pretrial population was also down just a bit. However, female populations increased again, and third female housing unit is open. As of this report, as of today, the population is dropping just a bit, but it's still high, and that population is still running ahead of last year as well. Medical. Closure number 7, intake screenings, 1,077 for the month. Physical health assessments, 435. Discharge referrals, 121. Our numbers are creeping back up. We had a transition in discharge planners, so as our new discharge planner is finding her way, then those numbers are getting back up to what our expectations are. And I think she's going to be a good addition to the staff. She's a real good rapport with the community, and is getting around to the housing units and interacting with the inmate population and identifying their needs, and then identifying the subsequent resources in the community. Mental health. Initial psychiatric assessments, 39. Initial mental health assessments, 68. Mental health infirmary replacements, 45. Our infirmary replacements are still high. Our infirmary replacements are still contain a lot of individuals with mental health issues. We've talked about that in the past, so that number continues to remain high. Referrals to community-based mental health services, outpatient site, zero. Mental health and co-occurring disorders, 51. Mental health therapy, four. I want to take you back to enclosure number 4. The most recent Correctional Officer Academy class completed their field officer training program on December 21, and those individuals are now assigned to housing unit duties on the second floor. So that class is out, and they are working on their own. Most recently, with regard to promotions. Okay, we talked about this at the podium as well, but at long last, we have promoted an individual to the rank of captain. We promoted one of our own lieutenants, Lieutenant Pat West, and Pat has been with us for, with the Department of Corrections. Well, he predates me by, gosh, a long time. So he's been around, he's been around since March 20, 1990, is when he OD'd, entered on duty. He was promoted to the rank of Correctional Officer 2, March 20, 1993. Promoted to the rank of Sergeant, Correctional Officer 3, July 5, 1996. He was promoted to the rank of Lieutenant, October 19, 1998. And he was a Christmas Day promotion to the rank of captain, December 25, 2013. I'd like to welcome Pat West to the rank of captain and introduce him to the board.
Now, actually, the first order of your first duty as captain is to, what do you got to say to us?
Hi, Pat West. You were promoted captain, Christmas Day. Just happy to serve, happy to be here.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
While he's making the rounds, I'll also, just for a little bit of history with Captain West, he was a shift lieutenant, worked 7 to 3, and he was, I've talked a lot about some of the officer safety things that we've done in light of some of the violent offenders, the increase in violent offenders coming into the facility, and releases some of the mental health issues that we've been dealing with in the facility. And Captain West, as a lieutenant, was very active in helping us identify some of those officer safety issues and researching some of those officer safety issues and making sure that they were implemented at the line officer level. It's not just enough to identify a particular tool or apparatus, but you have to research it, you have to test it, you have to get the policy developed, you have to train your staff on how to use it, that tool or technology or that apparatus appropriately, and you have to implement and monitor. And while there are a lot of hands on deck helping to implement these things, he was one of the strong proponents behind many of the changes that we've made and that we continue to make. So this is a good opportunity for promotion for him, and we look for great things out of Captain West.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your report?
You can't tell I have my light on.
That concludes my report.
Commissioner Otusia?
Again, Patrick, congratulations on your promotion as captain. That's awesome. Congratulations on that. Second of all, hey, I want to congratulate 70 individuals for GEDs for December. That's awesome. So congratulations on that. That's great.
I would expect that number to slow down in the first quarter of the calendar year as we make this transition to new tests, new testing process, new curriculum, new technology. So I won't have much positive to report for a few months until we begin to hit our stride. And there's still some things we've got to do, but we've got good support with DOTCom. We're going to need it because of the technology additions, but we'll be okay. And we've got to make a couple of hires, too.
And that brings a question. On the individuals that are currently in the process of getting their GED, are they grandfathered in, or will they have to go through this whole new process?
They're going to have to go through the whole new process.
Seriously? And when does that start?
January, this year, now.
Now?
Yes.
On that, I noticed you put on there that, you know, the preparations with this in DOTCom. Who's responsible for all these updates and all the preparations? Are we responsible for that?
Yes.
Even though they're, it's mandated?
Oh, of course.
I thought I'd ask.
No, we're responsible for that, and we don't really know what some of the final numbers will be, but we're starting to already work on the budget for '14, '15, and it won't be exorbitant, and we're just going to have to absorb the additional costs. But it will be additional costs.
Okay. And is the only thing you're doing is the technology, or do you have to redo the classrooms? Do you have to get new computers and stuff?
You know, let me, you know, I'm prepared for your questions, because I asked Mike Myers and Justine Wall to come here today, because I thought you'd have a series of detailed questions, Mr. Myers. Mike has been living with this since they first announced that there was going to be a transition, so he's got us prepared to make that transition, but in terms of some of the finite details, I'll let him speak to that.
Okay, thanks. Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Myers, the Community Corrections Manager for the Department of Corrections. In regards to your question, Commissioner, we have been working with Metro Community College, who had been, you know, kind of our oversight for GED, and they still will be in some ways, but not as, they won't have a complete umbrella as much as they used to, because GED, GED is a brand of the American Council on Education, and they're now partnering with a private company to do the testing piece, and so Metro won't have anything to do with the testing. So we have to work with a company called Pearson View, which they won the RFP to provide the testing piece. So there will actually be a contract likely in front of you on January 28 to create testing, Pearson View testing centers, one at the jail, one at community corrections. So we have two pieces going on. We have the testing piece, and then we have the revamped curriculum. The environment's going all electronic. There will be no paper testing anymore. And so our curriculum will be relying more on electronic instruction, computer-based instruction, so that the students are more prepared to take the test. We'll have to infuse some of that computer literacy skills into the curriculum. They are timed tests, so students will need to have some sophistication in how they utilize the computers so that they're able to complete the test in the timeframe. They are changing, there were five tests in the old GED model. Now there will only be four, but Metro Community College is predicting that they think it will take longer for individuals to achieve a GED, even though there's one fewer tests. The level of rigor and sophistication required to pass those tests is increasing with the updated model. So we probably will have fewer numbers in terms of graduates to report on an ongoing basis if those predictions hold true. But in terms of the actual level of competency that the students are attaining, hopefully we'll actually increase that, and, you know, they may end up having to complete their GEDs in the community after they're released, because it may take longer than our typical length of stay to complete.
So let's say they take the first test, and let's say they fail that. Can they immediately take it over again, or is there a waiting period?
It's a 30-day waiting period to retake a test that you failed. That's actually a change. It used to be 60. So that's actually a little bit of an improvement in terms of how things can operate for us as a shorter-term facility. We won't have to have people wait as long to take the, retake tests if they didn't pass.
With these new tests, will they be penalized at all if they don't pass it, or do they get a mark against them?
No, it's just a, they, you know, there's a fee now to take the tests.
And who pays for that?
Well, that will either be our inmate benefit account, or if the person can afford it, if they have the means to pay for it and they want to take the test, then we can have the individual take that payment. It, we used to not have to pay for testing under the old model, but now that they've partnered with a private, you know, for-profit company to do the testing, it'll now be a $20 fee per test. If you fail a test, you get to retake it a couple of times at no additional fee. There's two retakes at no cost if you don't. So we'll be judicious. We won't just, you know, throw people into testing unless we have a reasonable expectation that they're going to pass it comfortably.
Okay, interesting. And you said that's starting now, though?
It is starting now. The old model was no longer valid as of January 1. And all of this seems to be running, we were getting our guidance from Metro Community College, and they, there is a lot of unknowns, even as the date approached in terms of the guidance we were, they were getting and passing along to us. So we will attempt to, you know, get up and running as quickly as possible, but we had to understand all of logistics of what we needed to do prior to being able to proceed. Now that we've got a handle on that, we'll move forward.
So is this new GED process, is it just for you guys, or is it going to be across the board?
Across the United States.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There's no, there's no choice.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have on that. Mark, I have one other question for you. First of all, how are your new, new staff going, even though there's, you know, only a couple of weeks, how's things going with them?
Good. You know, one little anecdotal piece about that, we identified one of our new young lions, as I call them, in the staff break room, reading the policy, reading the inmate handbook. Just, he said, "What are you doing?" She said, "Just studying." So they're doing-
Do they get a promotion for that?
So they're doing well.
Well, good. I'm glad to hear that.
They're doing well.
Again, quick question on the overtime. I noticed it went way down during the holidays, which was sweet. I, you know, that was very, very unexpected. I see it starting to climb at the 1st of January, but I also see that you're kind of a little bit low on your staffing, so, you know, I assume that's possibility of why, and with the new inmates and stuff, so.
Yes, and, and we didn't have as many, we're still running way ahead population-wise from where we were last year, and you'd expect in this cold snap that our population would abate somewhat. Did not.
Okay. But great job on keeping it at least down during the holidays.
Thank you.
And wish you luck with your new, your new help, your new assistance.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I would. Any more lights? I have one more point.
One more light.
Okay.
Commissioner Boyle?
Good morning. Thank you. I appreciate these reports, and I have a question with, just a general question that you don't need to answer today. But when you go through the numbers, it's difficult for me to know if it's a good number or a bad number. And so I'd like to ask you that in the future, if there's something that jumps out at you, you know, for example, on page 2F, under the program removal summary, there's a group that says, "Number of individuals requesting programs." Their current month, there's 17, and year-to-date, 189. Is that a good number, or do you want it lower or higher? And I would assume you'd want it to be higher, but then that could trigger more programs. And what I'm really driving at is that to add some, I guess, another dimension to your report, that if there's nothing that's of any great significance, then that's okay. But when we sit here, when I sit here, I'll speak for myself, and I hear numbers, you know, I don't know whether that's a good number or a bad one. And so if you could tell me anyway that, you know, we've got, in the shoplifting group, we have 27 people to date, but we don't have any right now, is there any reason, I mean, something that's significant, is what I'm driving at?
That's a good point. I typically do that with, for example, our admissions numbers and misdemeanor pretrial population, felony pretrial population, ADP, and things like that. Not quite done, well, I haven't done that for these community corrections numbers. I'll ask Mike to do that, to try to highlight what he thinks for some of the good and some of the bad. So, you know, we're not going to take you through all the stats, but we'll take you through what should stand, standout numbers.
For me, the purpose is not to, not to get in and micromanage, because you're all doing a terrific job, but something that, if there's something we can do to help you, if there's something where the number is low and, you know, you need something to happen.
Okay.
You know, we, I guess I'll speak for myself again. I am very enthusiastic about trying to adapt to what your needs are. So more information on that would be helpful. And again, it doesn't have to be on every number you give. Some numbers are just numbers. So if something that makes some sense, let us know.
We'll definitely do that.
Good deal. Thank you.
It's a great idea.
Commissioner Otusia?
I have one quick question. We've got, of course, the last couple of days, there's been all kinds of stuff flying about the good time law. How is that going to affect you guys?
Don't know yet.
Okay.
I'll have to see how that law shakes out.
Do you think it'll be a major impact, or?
It could be. It depends on how that law affects, affects us as a jail, how it applies to us as a jail. It's really difficult to tell. It's really too early to tell how that, how that law's going to affect us. I need to see how it reads, and-
But it could potentially even cost us more.
It could, potentially, but it's really premature to, for me to speculate from a jail-
I know it's flying back and forth, but I was just-
It's real premature for me to speculate from the jail ops how that's going to affect us, but I can tell you, we've been, we've been reading all of proposed legislation, we've been reading the articles, and trying to follow just where that new, that new law's going to go. So as we watch this legislative session, we'll certainly be reporting back to the board as how-
Yeah, if you could keep us updated on that, I'd appreciate that, because like I said, that could potentially cost us even more if we have to continue to keep the inmates even longer.
Sure. And the unintended consequences of what the state does, I'm not sure just yet until we really see more concretely houchpromulgated.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. No other lights?
I have one more, one more thing I'd like to do. I'd like to call Denise Gaines down. And again, we address the issues relative to mental health, excuse me, I'm talking a lot, and we address the issues with regard to mental health quite frequently. We talk about the discharge plan and the need to refer individuals to resources in the community, because jail, again, just for kind of a review, we are short-term operation. People typically don't stay with us for a long time, so it's important for us to identify resources in the community that they can connect with. And that, talking about number of bed days saved, if we can reduce recidivism, if we can reduce bed days, if we can lengthen or interdict the amount of time a person is coming back to our facility, that's going to save us money. So the discharge planner is really important. So you hear me talk about that discharge planning number, and I wanted to introduce, or have Denise introduce our new discharge planner.
Good morning. Denise Gaines, Douglas County Corrections Mental Health Coordinator. Have no voice this morning, so I'm going to allow Diana to introduce herself. She just came on with us about a month and a half, two months ago. I'm excited about, about her being here. I'm going to let her talk about herself.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Diana Jones.
My name is Diana Jones. I have a bachelor's degree from Bellevue University in Human and Social Service Administration. My background is in juvenile probation and CPS. And I'm excited about this position. I feel that working with the juvenile CPS side of things, that now it's time to target the parents. A lot of the parents of inmates are the parents, so that's something that, you know, we definitely target. And just finding ways, community resources, help to get these individuals so they won't come back.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I couldn't hear you real well, but what is it? Who are you going to be working with? The parents of children who are... Have been gone through Child Protective Service or...
That's my background.
Oh, that's your background, okay.
So I feel that with that being my background and seeing that, then I know how to target the parents so that they won't have the same effect with their kids ending up in jail as well. That's one of my targets.
Okay. Targeting the parents who have been in jail and trying to do what? Change the way they live?
Change the way they think, change the way they live.
Okay.
So that their kids can have an opportunity to not end up in jail when they turn 18.
Okay. And do you do this within the confines of the building or do you follow them afterwards?
No, I just do it in the confines of the building. But if we need to set up services to where they can continue to get them when they're discharged, I'm happy to do that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will have something a little bit more formal in... On the Board's 28th agenda, but I did want to extend on behalf of the Board our sympathies for the loss of Ron Welsh. He passed away. He was a sergeant with the Correction Department and I can't remember for how long, but...
Twenty, almost 24 years.
Twenty-four years.
In fact, he and Captain West were in the same academy class.
Oh, okay.
And that funeral was Sergeant Ron Welch had retired in April, April 1st of 2013 due to battling his illness. And that funeral was Saturday. But in fact, Captain West, still here, Captain West and Sergeant Welsh came on together and they were promoted to CO2 together as well, so...
Well, extend our sympathies not only to the family, but also to the Family Act Corrections.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry.
The agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, roll call please.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Craft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner Rogers?
Commissioner Tusha?
Here.
Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, January 7, 2014. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, January 21, 2014. Any questions or... Was there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Consent agenda, items A through H for a total of eight items. Any questions or comments?
I don't see it. I didn't.
Nope. Okay. Please vote.
Second.
Yeah, Commissioner Rogers, please vote. Recognition and proclamations, we do have Mr. Lee Legere here that will talk to us about the Martin Luther King celebration coming up.
Good morning.
Members of the County Board, Lee Legere, Douglas County Human Resources, Civil Service. We would like to invite the members of the County Board and our county employees to attend our ninth annual County City Recognition Program of the Reverend Martin Luther King and His Message to All Peoples. This is a program put on by the County Human Resource Department, City of Omaha Human Resource Department, and the City of Omaha Human Rights and Relations Department. The program will again be held in the legislative chambers at the Civic Center from 12 noon to 1 o'clock this Friday, January 17. Our guest speaker will be Mr. Willie Barney, President of the Empowerment Network and President and publisher of Revive Omaha Magazine. We will again have several musical presentations by Ms. Camille Mottier-Motin, Omaha's most versatile singer. And if you've been to any of the programs in the past, she's such a... Has a wonderful voice, is such a tremendous lady. Camille as well is going to be co-starring along with her sister in an upcoming Omaha Community Playhouse play titled Having Our Say, which starts this coming Friday, January 17, through February 9, 2014. This is always a fun event honoring a man who championed freedom and equality for all peoples in regards to civil rights, respect, and dignity. Hopefully you will be able to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? We'll move to the Finance Committee meeting and we have one chair of the Finance Committee here. Do you have anything?
No.
The budget report is as presented. Next is the Child and Youth Services. Commissioner Rogers, you have two?
Yes, and I'll present those two together. One and two together are a grant in partnership with us and the Sherwood Foundation. It's actually a process we've been working on for a year. It was reviewed by the Child and Youth Service Committee probably five or six months ago and now has been working through the legal contracts and everybody has come to peace on that grant. And I'd like to move approval.
Both, one and two?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
If I can, I'd like specifically the grant in three phases of the grant will fund: one, JDAI assistant staff to help with the coordinator; two, a pilot program in DCYC with day reporting; and three, it will fund a program that came out of JDAI's Alternative to Detention, which we have a secure facility and a lot of the people in secure facility actually shouldn't be there. They need placement in respects to a parent. They may not take them or they may need some family support service, so the program will fund that and try to prevent kids from even getting to the detention center and getting some services that the family needs.
Any other questions or comments on these? We'll move to the Human Resources. The first item is the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as Presented. If there's no questions or comments on that. Item two, Weekly CAO Report on Staff Assaults.
Two or four.
Item three, Legislative Issues. This was laid over from last week, a discussion and possible action to support a permanent or long-term application for Nebraska Homestead Exemption. Commissioner Boyle?
I put this on the agenda really to kind of be in the background and kind of out there because it's a short session and I don't know that we would want to even try to get something like this introduced because it could be controversial. But I would like us to, first of all, think about whether or not we support this. We have so many people come up who have done everything except forgot to send in the form or somebody was ill and there's all these complications that take place that cause people who are elderly and in this category a lot of time trouble and stress, strain, and money in many cases. And so I'd like to see the homestead exemption be treated somewhat like social security where you apply and, you know, you receive it and they have a mechanism, the federal government has a mechanism to figure out when people are no longer eligible to receive the benefit. And I would think we could do the same. So I'd like us to either make an application for homestead exemption permanent and we would have to have mechanisms that follow through to make sure that, you know, and the assessment's office does that pretty well. We saw that last week when the fellow was in here that had all sorts of information. The other thing is either make it a permanent or at least five years, something like that that gives us a little bit of a handle on, gives some people some relief. That's my suggestion. And what I specifically would like to do is ask our lobbyists with the Board's permission to keep an eye open for legislation that something like this could be attached to.
If there isn't anything that this could be attached to, would you like to, in the interim, like, you know, between this legislative session and the start of next, maybe see if we can come up with a little bit more detail on what the pros and the cons would be?
I think that'd be great. I mean, I'm sure there's people who think there are cons, but naturally I don't see any. But I'd be glad to do that. I'd like to see this move along some way and get it decided.
Yep.
The other note I want to make is that LB 46, which was the bill to require the merger voted the people, merger of the crime labs, the two that are most obvious. Mayor Stothard called and asked if, you know, we could... That I would be willing to delay it. And I talked to her a little bit and finally really decided that that probably was the best thing to do because I'm the only person on the Board who supports it. And the City Council doesn't support it, neither does the Mayor. And so the specter of us going down to Lincoln and arguing again about Omaha Douglas County in front of the legislature was just... That was enough to make me say, "Let's do this in-house." So I told her I would. I contacted Senator Ashford and said, "Would you just let the bill slide through?" And so he did. And so it's history. I did, and talking to the Mayor, said, "I asked her if I could be appointed to this committee," and she said, "Yes," so we'll see what happens.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. But I think, you know, with Marty Bealick up there and, you know, I think we'll come to some kind of resolution, I hope. I'm really just trying to save some dough. You know, the payroll for our crime lab is really getting up there, over 800,000 this last year, so I hope we can find some way to get some efficiencies.
Well, and I do know that Chief Schmodder is much more amenable and cooperative in coming to the table and talking about how do we get it done? So I think there's a good cooperation now that we haven't seen before. So I think you'll be seeing something in the near future.
Good.
Okay.
Thanks.
The other, we'll have a full legislative report on the 28th with all of the bills that have been introduced and those that we're going to be watching or playing defense In the... So no other legislative issues at this point. Item four, there is a resolution approving the agreement with the Bonding and Technical Services, Inc., for the county's continued participation in the Surety Bond and Technical Services Program.
Make a motion to approve.
Any questions or comments? There is need for executive session. We have labor and do we have litigation?
We do.
And litigation. Oh, yeah. No meeting next week in observance of Martin Luther King Day, and so the next scheduled Board meeting is January 28. There a motion to adjourn executive session?
Move.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes.
For Purple Mountain Majesty, above the fruited plain, America, America.